Oh, seven. I'm going to call the public meeting to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, and recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. Do I see?
That's Owen.
Owen, okay, I see Owen is on Zoom. Sorry, I lost my... Please refrain from using flash photography. If anyone from the public wishes to access the public meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, 1-929-205-6099. Zoom meeting ID is 897-1229-3538. Password is BORN, all caps. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. And let's take a moment to acknowledge our public safety. All right. Pledge of声明?
Pledge of声明.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, we are a nation under God and indivisible, we liberate and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Okay. Do we have somebody that could do the vision and mission?
I'll take the vision. Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces actual education and offers the citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I can... I'm sorry to interrupt. People are free to record using their own devices. We do not allow recording through the town Zoom.
Okay, so yes. Were you able to hear that all online? Thank you for that. Thank you, Marley, and I did see that pop up. Okay. Do we have somebody for the mission?
I can read it. Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
All right, and we have our community shout-out. I think tonight, I'm just going to take just a second to shout out to our rec department, our rec for the work that's going to be, that they're doing out for our new playground out back. They are unveiling that and having a ribbon cutting tomorrow at 2:00 PM. The Bourne Braves are also in the playoffs. And I don't know if anyone else has any shout-outs, Peter, anyone?
I want to thank our public safety departments, Bourne Police, and Bourne Fire for their... for the involvement Pan Mass Challenge, you know, which is past weekend. And with everything else going on, they're all very busy, but the neighborhood was in good hands, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, hearing none. Moving on. So, public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for up to 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each spent beaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to the posting requirements of the open meeting law. Do we have anyone here for public comment this evening? Oh, yeah. Okay, come on up to the mic, say your name and your village, or where you... and the town you live in.
Hi, my name is Bryce. I'm the owner of Nine Mercury Ave in Pecasset. Some of you may be familiar with Nine Mercury Ave or Five Mercury Ave, which is the lot next door, which is why I'm here. Unfortunately, the lot next door has a large bus on the property, and it's been collecting trash on the lot as well for years. There's been a lot of complaints to the town about the lot and the bus that's on it. The town has issued an order to correct about the bus and the trash that's on the lot. Unfortunately, that was months ago, and there's been seemingly no follow-up done. The neighborhood is concerned and really wants to make sure that this is rectified. Everyone in town really cares about the neighborhood and the safety of everyone. There are a lot of large rats coming from the bus, raccoons, bunnies around, and it's generally, people feel, it's a health hazard and really want to make it known that it's really can't go on much longer. So, just wanted to make that known. I did buy the house next door, so I unfortunately have to look at it every day. There is a large amount of trash. The owners have moved the trash around to the neighbor next door, who is elderly and not able to rectify that himself. So, it really is a problem, the people and the health hazard conditions over there. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that and just see if we can move forward on the issue to correct. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see John York has his hand up. Mr. York, go ahead for three minutes for comment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, I want to speak again about the Bridges Program, the Bridges Requesting Program. There will be quite a busy schedule coming up in September for the Bridges Program. During that time, they'll be releasing their draft environmental impact statement. There will also be... and they will have their quarterly stakeholder advisory group meeting will be on September 9th, which... but also, there will be two more public meetings during, presumably during September. One is a public meeting associated with the draft EIS, which is a required official public hearing for public input on the draft EIS. And the second is a public hearing for mitigation for any impacts that this project will have on recreation facilities. The biggest one is Seating Park, and the Bourne Recreation Authority has been in ongoing talks with the Bridges Program, developing a mitigation program. They're going to lose some of their real estate to the New Bourne Bridge if and when the New Bourne Bridge is built, but also, they're going to have a lot of construction impacts. So, there will be a public hearing for that as well, which is likely to be in September, possibly early October. I know this select board schedule will be very busy in September and early October, looking towards the special town meeting towards the end of October. But I want you... I would like the select board to be paying a lot of attention to the Bridges Program during the month of September. I think it's important for our town to weigh in on the draft EIS. If our town has any views, one way or the other, about this Bridges Program, that would be the time and place to express them. And I know we have representation on the stakeholder advisory group, except I would like to see the boards that are supposedly represented by those individuals actually discussing in an open meeting before the individual goes to that stakeholders' group their views, so that the representative can actually be representing the views of the committee that they're supposed to be representing. So, there's several town committees with members on that panel, and I think that's important. I think also this select man should be discussing, as an agenda item in open meeting...
Thank you, John. Yes, sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marley. Do you have another public comment?
I'm not sure of the forum or if I'm...
Well, we have... Well, public comments on non-agenda items, so if it's something on the agenda, you would wait until we get to that item. If it's not, you could come to the mic and we have...
It's not on any agenda that...
So, come on up, and if it's a comment, we can give you three minutes, sir. Sure.
Okay. Hi, my name is George Price, and I had an idea and a recommendation, and that is to add another sculpture at the Bourne, the Buzzards Bay Park called the Fisher Woman. Walking down the canal, I don't see too many women fishing. If they are, they're with their boyfriends or husbands, and times have changed a little bit. Wouldn't it be nice, as a grandfather or a father, to walk by another sculpture of a woman? And I have the sculpture in my mind of what it should look like. It happens to be my daughter, and what a wonderful thing for the younger generation, especially the younger women, to feel welcome and empowered to fish in this community. Just a glance, maybe you won't be able to see it. She fishes at the canal and around the canal, but if you can envision something like that... and I know if I had a child or a grandchild, the first place they're going to want to go is to look at this. It's a wonderful girl. She's a nurse. She's living, so it wouldn't be anywhere near a memoriam. So, I'd like to be led in the proper direction in order to introduce this idea a little further. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? We have one more. Time for one more? No? All right, hearing none. Moving on. Thank you. Okay, so number four, we have a poll hearing. So, I will start here. It's my first hearing, so bear with me. Under General Laws, Chapter 166, Section 22, the Bourne Select Board has received a petition from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to consider granting permission to locate underground cables, conduits, manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures in, under, and across Wings Neck Road, as shown on Plan Number 211-86171, to upgrade existing service. I hereby open the public hearing for said petition. As a first order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing, one, a copy of the legal notice provided by the town for public hearing, and, two, a copy of the petition and supporting materials provided to the town of Bourne dated July 9th, 2025. Having taken those actions, I will now open the floor to the applicant who may speak concerning the petition. Is the applicant here to present?
I don't know if anybody can hear me.
We can.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was trying to get in via Zoom, and for some reason, I was having a problem, so I dialed in. I'm Jessica, representing EverSource, and good evening, members of the select board. Thank you for having me this evening. EverSource is requesting to install one handle that's labeled 295 over 14 H.A. and 33 feet of conduit. This work is being requested for the customer at 343 Wings Neck Road, so we're going for one side of the street under the other. And we will be installing the conduit via directional drilling, unless we run into complications, which really doesn't usually happen. So, we'll be drilling with minimal disturbance to the road. Any disturbances to the road will be put back to its original condition or better. This work shouldn't take more than a day or two. If necessary, we will request the details, you know, for the safety of our employees and also for the safety of the town. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty simple.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to... I'm now going to open the floor to public comment. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Before you speak, please state your name and your street address. If you have any questions for the applicant, please address them to me, the chair, and I will ask the applicant to respond when your comment time has concluded. Do we have any comments regarding... public comment regarding this application? All right, hearing none. Time permitting, comment all right. Moving on. Select Board, okay. If the Select Board... Does the Select Board have any questions, or would we like to deliberate prior to closing the hearing? Okay, hearing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we're taking a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion made by Peter Meyer, second by Jean, to approve this petition, correct?
No, just to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, we're closing the hearing. Okay, so roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
5-0-0 to close the public hearing. Okay, so now we need to take a motion to approve the petition as presented or with any amendments. I'm assuming it would be as presented.
So, move.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter Meyer to accept.
Second.
Second by Anne Marie. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we have FY 2024 Audit Exit Conference. Clifton Larson, LLP.
Could we move the Item 11A, Licensing Public Hearing that was posted for 7:00 to annual entertainment license? Officer, anyone here for that? I think that should be quick.
Do you want to do... Does any... Does the board... Everybody's okay with that? No objection? Okay, sir. All right, so let's do that then. Sorry about that. You'll be up... You'll be right coming up next. All right, so, once again, one more quick public hearing. Under General Laws, Chapter 146 and 177, the Bourne Select Board has received an application from...
Yep.
Oh, very good. Nutjohn New...
Win.
Win.
Like you like to win games.
Doing... Like that, I was close. Doing business as Cape Cod Billiards Academy to consider approving a new annual entertainment license for seven billiard tables at 111 Main Street Buzzards Bay. I hereby open the public hearing for said application, and I will now open the floor to the applicant to speak about the proposal.
Thank you, Select Board. I'm really excited to be bringing you guys a Billiards Academy, especially in Bourne. It's going to be the first of its kind in the nation, because it's not going to be a bar model. There will be no food or drinks served. It is strictly a training ground. So, we have the best equipment that we provided in the space, but we also are merging technology. So, every table has projectors on the table that actually shows how to play pool. We have instruction, and we also have everyday training schedules for folks that are going to be there. It'll be members only, so there won't be any publics coming in for hourly table time. And I'm kind of excited to introduce this business model to you guys.
Yeah, very cool. All right. I'm now going to open the floor to public comment. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Before you speak, please state your name and your street address. If you have any questions for the applicant, please address them to me, the chair, and I will ask the applicant to respond when your comment time has concluded. Do we have any public comments? In the audience, is there anyone here? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move on.
I'm just going to make a comment. This is kind of a unique thing, and I think... Where did you come up with this idea? I mean, you said that the first in the nation. Is it something that's been in other areas of the world? I mean, how did you come up with this idea?
No, there's not another model like this. There has been some clubs that opened. One of them is in New York. Because of the space constraint, they actually opened a club so that people can come and play. But it really originated out of two passions of mine. Number one, when you go to play pool as a sport, there isn't a place for somebody who doesn't drink, doesn't like the bar scene, doesn't like the smoke scene, right, and wants a quiet place to kind of train. And also, because I don't serve alcohol or food, I can also introduce a wide range of participants, namely families, kids, fathers, sons, who don't want to bring their child to a bar, right? So, that was one of my thoughts. The other one is, everywhere you go, there's really not a place to really play and hone your skills. Like, when you go to a bar, the bars are really small. It really is made to keep customers there longer, so they don't ever take care of the equipment. Always beer stains, always dirty balls, always terrible lights, right? And then, I wanted to introduce the public to what it's really like to be a sport. When you go into the European countries, they are killing American players, just because they treat it as a sport, and we don't have anything like it. So, I am really excited to bring those three aspects of, one, educating our folks, two, having a really premium place for people to play, where everything is just immaculate, and, three, to be able to provide an alternative that, you know, everybody can enjoy instead of, again, being at a bar scene, you know, and families kind of stay away from that. So, that was my idea.
Yeah, yeah, no, go ahead. I also appreciate this. It's interesting and it's exciting to find an alternative that isn't an alcohol bar. I mean, that's something when we were in the Economic Development Corporation or whatever in 1990, we were always looking for something that would... It's a college town. We need some activities and things that aren't revolved around bars and food. On that note, are you going to... Planning on offering any discounts for veterans or students who are trying to attract, you know, your audience? Where do you see your...
You know, I have a monthly fee, and I also am thinking of doing like a one-day pass where people can come in, especially with our community here, where we have a lot of people who come for vacation. And if they look online and trying to find a place to play, that, you know, again, not in the bar scene, you can't find anything in the Cape, all right? As far as discounts for senior citizens and also our veterans, I am involved with Joe's Coffee Veterans Group, and I know I'll be offering like discounts to certain groups. I just... It's just a challenge right now, because the model that I have is, is that when people pay for memberships, it automatically logs them into the phone, so that it allows them to badge in and out. So, having a lot of different groups has been more of a challenge right now of like, hey, we offer this, and then it goes through for the key, you know, all the technology that goes into that. It's something that I'm thinking about, but right now launching, it's just a little bit of a barrier, but it's coming.
Good. Good luck. All right, anyone else?
It's a building that changes tenants every so often, but it's nice to have someone in there, so, you know, you're in a prime spot on Main Street, right across from the park, so, you know, thank you for coming to town. Thank you for taking a chance, and wish you best of luck.
Well, thank you. And I love that bridge, by the way. That's part of my logo, so I invite you guys to come over and visit anytime.
Just don't mind the noise. I'm thirsty nights from 6:00 to 8:00 across the street.
And I just want to add real quickly, you know, I think it's a great idea. You know, I spent a lot of my younger years in the bars playing pool, and we enjoyed the times, but now that I'm older and I don't drink as often, only with dinner or whatever, it would be nice to go out and be able to have somewhere to enjoy billiards that you're not really in that scene. It's loud, and, you know, you don't really get to enjoy it, and having the lessons, I think, is really important for somebody rusty like myself. I used to be able to beat my husband. Maybe I can get that far again, so thank you for that. All right, so moving on. So, we need a motion to close the public hearing, correct?
So, move.
All right. So, Peter, motion to close hearing.
Second.
Second from Jean. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
5-0-0, public hearing is closed.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual entertainment license for Nutjohn Quinn, DBA, Cape Cod Billiards Academy, located at 111 Main Street Buzzards Bay.
Okay, we get a motion from MJ, second from Jean. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Unanimous, 5-0-0. Welcome to town.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience back there and now. All right. Let me just do this. Okay. All right, next, back to... Sorry about that. Number five, FY 2024 Audit Exit Conference, Clifton Larson Allen, LLP.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Zach Petros. I am an audit manager with CLA, and I'm here tonight to present the results of the audit for the June 30th, 2024 financial statements. So, tonight, we're going to go through the terms of the engagement, some required communications that we're required to give to you folks, an executive summary, some financial highlights. We'll also go over the management letter, and then at the end, we'll open it up for any questions anybody has. So, the terms of the engagement, so this is essentially what the town of Bourne hired us to do. You hired us to provide an opinion on your financial statements. You hired us to provide an opinion on your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, otherwise known as the CIFA, and this is in relation to your single audit of your federal grants. You also hired us to express an opinion on the compliance related to those major federal grants, so ensure that the town is in compliance with the federal requirements in expending those grants. You also hired us to provide a report on the internal control over the financial reporting and compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. And then, the last two are to provide a report on the internal control over compliance related to your federal awards, and then finally, a management letter. So, some required communication. I mentioned that we're required to give you some communication. This is what's known as the governance letter. So, it's really just a letter that we provide to you, the Select Board, in an overall... And overall, it describes what the significant accounting policies are, which are more described in Note One of your financial statements. It also asks us to let you know that there wasn't any transactions that didn't lack any authoritative guidance, and then all significant transactions are in the proper accounting period, and then finally, the financial statements are neutral, clear, and consistent. There are also some estimates that we're required to talk with you about, and those that have a higher degree of uncertainty, and there's three of those, and that is your net OPEB liability, and OPEB stands for your other post-employment benefits, which is your health insurance liability, the IBNR, which stands for incurred but not reported. This is in relation to your Internal Service Fund for your health insurance, and then finally, your landfill liability. We didn't identify or come across any difficulties when we were performing the audit, and then find the last three items are, is that there were no uncorrected misstatements as part of our audit. Any listing of any misstatements that were corrected were included as an attachment to that letter, and then finally, there were no disagreements with management. So the executive summary. On the financial statement audit, the town received an unmodified opinion. That's on pages one and two in the financial statements. This is the best opinion you can receive from an independent auditing firm, and it's the same opinion that the town has received in prior years. On the management letter, we have five comments or recommendations, and we'll get to that at the end of my presentation. And then for the single audit, that's the federal grant audit piece that we look at. We looked at two grants this year. The first grant we looked at is your Child Nutrition Cluster, which is your school lunch, and then we also looked at ESER, which is another school grant in relation to ARPA, and we had no findings in relation to either of those, so you've got Clean Bill of Health on compliance with your federal grants for the two that we looked at during fiscal year twenty twenty four. So I'm going to go into some financial highlights. On page fourteen, you have your governmental activities, and you can see your net position. You had a net position of forty-six point one million dollars. That's an increase of about eighteen point three million dollars, and that increase is primarily due to a decrease in your other post-employment expenses. It's a bit complex, but in twenty twenty one, there was a large change in assumption that was reflected in the liability for your net OPEB liability. However, it doesn't impact the income statement all in one year, it actually does it over the course of six years, so there were year in year four of six this year, which is why you see that big decrease or increase in your fund balance, but it's a decrease in your OPEB expenses. Additionally, you had net investment in capital assets of about a hundred million dollars. You had restricted net position of about thirty-four million dollars, the largest of which is about ten million dollars that has been set aside for your health insurance fund. And then finally, you do have a deficit unrestricted fund balance, and that's primarily due to the unfunded OPEB and pension liabilities. This is not uncommon for a community in the Commonwealth. Most communities have a deficit unrestricted fund balance in their governmental activities, so it's nothing to be concerned about, but again, the driving force of that is your unfunded pension and OPEB liabilities. Moving on to the general fund, which you can see on page seventeen, and I'm going to focus just on that last item there, that unassigned fund balance, that seventeen point two million. This is probably the most important figure in your financial statements for two reasons. First is, it's the starting point for your free cash calculation. And secondly, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends to have a ratio when comparing your unassigned fund balance to your expenditures of sixteen point seven percent. It's an odd number, but they say two months, which is sixteen point seven percent. So if you go to the next slide, you can actually see that ratio on, it shows you five years, but as of June thirty, twenty twenty four, that ratio is at nineteen point one percent, and that's going to be viewed favorably by your users of the financial statements. It's a good financial position for the Town of Born to be in. When I say your users of the financial statements, I'm referring mostly to your bond rating agencies, they're going to look at that very favorably. So you're above where the GFOA recommends it to be, and again, that's going to be a good financial position for the town to be in. Moving on to the sewer enterprise fund, you have total net position of seven point eight million. It's down about four hundred and forty-five thousand from the prior year, and what makes that up is your net investment in capital assets of six point nine million, as well as your unrestricted net position of nine hundred and fourteen thousand. I think what's also important to note about your sewer fund is when you're looking at the cash flows for the sewer fund, your cash flows from your operations covers your principal and interest payments on your debt. So I think that's something that's a good, something to look at for your enterprise fund, is are our cash flows from our operations able to pay our principal and interest on our outstanding debt? And that is true for the Town of Born as of June thirty, twenty twenty four, and that's the tune of about seven hundred thousand dollars to the good. So your cash flow from operations cover your principal and interest payments, and you have an extra about seven hundred thousand dollars after those principal and interest payments. So that's a really good, you know, item to look at when looking at enterprise funds. Moving on to the landfill, which is also on page twenty-one, you have a total net position of about twenty-four million, it's about a two point two million dollar increase from the prior year. And I'm going to go down to the last two items there, that you have set some cash aside for your future landfill needs, for your closure and your post-closure. You've set aside fifteen point two million dollars for future closure and post-closure costs. That's an increase from the prior year. Last year, you had set aside fourteen point three million, so you've set aside a bit more for those future closure and post-closure costs. And then as of June thirty, twenty twenty four, your total landfill liability is thirteen point six million. It's about a two point one million dollar increase from the prior year, and that increase is due to about a million dollars on your post-closure costs, as well as a new phase nine that has a new liability associated with it of about eight hundred thousand dollars. Moving into some of your note disclosures that I want to talk with you about, the first is going to be your long-term debt obligations. Now, I'm not going to be talking about pension and OPEB in relation to this, those will be on future slides, this is simply just going to be your bonds and notes payable, as well as your compensated absences. So for your governmental activities, you had total long-term obligations outstanding of about forty-three point nine million, it's down from forty-six point six million in the prior year, and the reason for that decrease is your principal payments that you made on your outstanding debt during fiscal year twenty four. Likewise, on your business-type activities, you had outstanding debt of five point nine million, which is down from six point four million in the prior year. Same reason, the reason for that decrease is the principal payments that you folks, or the town made on your outstanding debt obligations. Now, something that I like to look at, and what users of the financial statements like to look at, again, your bond rating agencies, they like to see between seventy to seventy-five percent of your debt paid off within ten years. And as of June thirty, twenty four, seventy-four percent of your governmental activities debt will be paid off within ten years, and that's going to be viewed favorably by your users of the financial statements, is a good financial position for the town to be in. Likewise, your business-type activities is slightly below, it's at sixty-seven percent. By no means is that a bad financial position, it's an okay financial position, you're just slightly below where your users of the financial statements like to see it, but nothing to be concerned about. OPEB, which is your other post-employment benefits, that's on, that note disclosure is on page fifty-five. You have a net OPEB liability of sixty-one point one million, that's slightly up from the prior year, it's an increase of about four point one million. Now, that increase is due to a change in assumption that was made by your actuary, and that change in assumption was the estimated impact of the Inflation Reduction Act on the Medicaid program drug plans. So they factored that into the most recent valuation, which increased that liability by about four point one million dollars in fiscal year twenty four for you folks. Now, your total liability is actually seventy-one point four million, but you have put some funds aside. If you look at that second bullet there, you have total OPEB trust assets of ten point three million dollars. So that's where you have that net liability of sixty-one point one million that's presented in your financial statements. So if you look at that from a funding perspective, you've only funded about fourteen point four percent of that liability. Now, that's not a large number, but that's going to be, again, viewed favorably, because most communities in the Commonwealth, towns around your size are anywhere from zero to ten percent. So you're above where your contemporaries are in the Commonwealth, slightly above that ten percent at fourteen percent. And again, what your bond rating agencies like to see is a commitment to funding that liability year over year over year, and the Town of Born has done that. Year over year, you're putting money aside into this OPEB trust fund to begin funding this liability into the future, and again, that's a good position for the Town of Born to be in, and again, will be viewed favorably. On the bottom there, we have some sensitivity analysis of what would happen if those assumptions on your discount rate or your healthcare trend rate went up or down one percent. You can see it actually has a pretty big effect on that liability. Next, we have the pension plan, and the town is part of the Barnstable County Retirement System, and the proportional share of the, the town's proportional share of that total liability is forty-four point eight million. This is down about two point three million dollars from the prior year. Now, the reason that this is down about two point three million dollars is investment results for the Barnstable County Retirement System came in greater than what they anticipated. And when that happens, you see a reduction in your liability. The town's proportional share of that liability is five point five five percent, and what's important to note is that this liability is actually presented as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So it's about six months before the date of your financial statements. That's, everybody in the Commonwealth has that same, all retirement systems have a twelve, thirty-one year end, so it's always six months in a year, so be mindful of that when you're looking at that pension liability. It's really on a calendar year basis, six months before, rather than on the fiscal year basis where the towns go. Similarly, with pension, there is a sensitivity analysis to show that if your discount rate was one percent higher or lower, what the impact on your liability would be. You can see it does have a rather large impact if you go up one percent or down one percent in that assumption. And that's everything I want to show you for the financial highlights. Next, we'll talk about the management letter, and we had five comments and recommendations. The first four are recommendations, and the last one's more of a comment. The first one is your old outstanding checks. The town did have a number of outstanding checks that were older than three months, so what we're recommending is that the town investigate those, figure out why the businesses aren't being, aren't cashing those, and if necessary, to void them and move them into entailings liability, and follow the corresponding MASH general law with handling of those checks. Second item is your capital assets, construction in progress. Each year, we take a deep dive into one specific item during the audit. We call it an unpredictability test, and this year, we went into it with construction in progress, and we looked at what was sitting in there. What we found was is that there were some items that should have been, that were incorrectly being classified as construction in progress, so what we're recommending is that each year, the town make sure that they're going through that construction in progress account, see what's in there, to see if it should be moved to depreciable asset account, or if it should be expended in full. The third item is accounting for your opioid settlement funds. The town is currently tracking the opioid settlement funds in the general fund, however, you do have the option by MASH general law to account for it in a special revenue fund. And the advantage of doing it in a special revenue fund as opposed to the general fund is you don't need further appropriation to spend it out of that special revenue fund, which could be advantageous to the town, so we thought it might be a good recommendation. Third one there is the DBW, I know it says DPE, my apologies for that, inventory tracking. A few years ago, we went to DBW and noticed that they didn't have a automated inventory tracking system, and we recommended that they implement that, and they're in the process of implementing that, they do have that inventory tracking, it's just not fully implemented yet, so we didn't want to remove the comment, we just wanted to say that to keep working towards it, it's a large undertaking, it's not something that we expected to be done in one year. So they're working towards that, and our recommendation is just to continue working towards that and get it fully implemented. And then the last one is just an informational comment, it's nothing that the town did wrong. It's in relation to the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB one oh one, and that's a new accounting statement that the town's going to have to implement for your June thirty, twenty twenty-five financial statements. This is in relation to your compensated absences. We're not going to leave the town high and dry and say, best of luck, we'll tell you if you got it right or wrong, we'll be there to help you folks implement that and to provide some guidance throughout that process, but the town is going to need to change how they're accounting and how they're documenting, not documenting, how they're accounting for in their estimates for those compensated absences. That brings me into my presentation, are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Very thorough, I'm sure MJ has the question.
I have, maybe a question, but I have a comment. And I just want to kind of note it for the record. In terms of the pension and OPEB liabilities for the landfill in particular, the landfill, there's a limited life of the landfill based on the airspace and the way they're going to be able to operate. It is possible that they will continue as a transfer station, but one of my goals is to make sure that OPEB and pension liabilities are satisfied by the time the landfill closes, so having, especially for OPEB, getting that actuarially looked at to make sure that what we're not on that thirty-year timeline, we're on the timeline of the life of the landfill, so, but I, I think it's worth tracking, and I appreciate that it's being done. We've also made a lot of progress in OPEB, a couple of years ago, the liability was over a hundred million, and because we've been good about putting it away, it's changed it, so I like to make that plug that we've been doing a good job on that. I have a question about the debt. So we have, we're in the process now of approving large, some large projects, we had a debt exclusion for the fire station for eighteen point eight million. We have a proposal coming to the Fall Town Meeting for another twenty-five million dollars for the, for the ice swim facility, so that's going to change, you know, a little bit what our debt looks like, and I'm interested in some modeling of our debt management to make sure that we're sort of staying on top of that in terms of adding another project, like a library, like, how does that affect our debt picture? And I think it's important to manage those things, so.
Certainly, does the town use First Southwest, Erica, or? Unit Bank. Unit Bank would be much more capable of answering any questions you have on how the debt looks to the town than I would be, they would be the experts in that endeavor.
Okay, but, I mean, it was interesting, because you said seventy to seventy-five percent of the debt paid off, and it's a particular, and when you start adding large projects that are twenty-five year, twenty or twenty-five year projects, then that can change that, so that'll be an impact in the future. But that's something we can ask for then, is a debt look from, a report forecasting from Unit Bank, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Oh, the last thing was for the special revenue for OPEB opioid settlement, did we do that already?
We did.
Yeah, we did that at the town meeting, right?
Perfect.
Implemented as, you know, you recommend we implement, thank you.
All right, any, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me, enjoy the evening, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, moving right on this evening. Okay, so next we have discussion of potential gift from the Friends of Born Rail Trail, banners for placement at town property.
So Ken Chatlin is on Zoom to speak to this, and there was a supplemental packet sent yesterday with the banner images.
Okay, Ken, if you give you the floor and state your name and your address, where you live, your village.
My name is Ken Chatlin, I'm at four eighty-five Circuit Avenue in Pecasa. Thank you very much, members of the Select Board, for considering this gift from us. I am, in the interest of all disclosure, I am a member of the Town Administrators Advisory Committee on Bicycle Pedestrian Pathway, our town's greatest committee name, and I am also the president of the Friends of the Born Rail Trail, and I'm appearing in that capacity tonight. We appreciate greatly the consistent and long-term support that the members in the Select Board have given to this project to build an extension of the Shining Sea Bike Way, called the Born Rail Trail, from the terminus of the current Shining Sea Bike Way to the canal. We've been working on this project, if you can believe it, since twenty sixteen, and in the last few years, it has been clear that the key to this project is the removal of the FAMO secondary, little-used FAMO secondary rail line, and that that decision is made by the governor of the Commonwealth, because it's Commonwealth property. We've obviously appeared before the Select Board, it was passed in twenty twenty-three, the board generously endorsed removal of the track so that we can build the rail trail. The Town Advisory Committee has been working on a so-called rail with trail option, and in fact, tomorrow, there's a public hearing to consider phase one of that project, which is now estimated at ten point one million dollars for half a mile. That should be a spirited conversation, but my purpose tonight is to ask the Select Board to accept a gift from the Friends of the Born Rail Trail. The Friends have been consistently advocates for removal of the track in order to build the trail, we do not believe the trail can be built in its entirety if the track remains. And fortunately, we've had a tremendous amount of support that are not just from the Select Board, but also from Congressman Keating, the local legislators, Senator Fernandez, Representative Vera, and we've been advised that we really need a decision from the governor very soon, because the money that we have secured through the... because the money that we have secured through the CCRTA, the 20 to 25 million dollars is federal funding, and the administration in Washington has threatened clawing back of funding from the CCRTA, which resulted in our losing our dedicated funding, the only condition for which has been a decision by the governor to remove the track. So we're really putting a full court press on this month. I've spoken with Congressman Keating, he's all in favor of this, to try and convince the governor to make a decision. The governor's really delegated this decision to the lieutenant governor. So we are doing a series of things this month to try to make that happen. And one of which is we have created banners, and we would like very much to give four of those banners to the town and request that the town post those banners in locations, of course, that the select board decides upon, and we have suggestions for those locations. But obviously, this is a gift to the town, and it's entirely up to you as members of the select board to decide if and where you would post these banners. Our suggestions, in case you want to know of them, are the Pecasa Fire Station, the Bourne Library, the community building, and I realize with those last two, we've got these additional consents needed from the boards of trustees, and the Monument Beach Shack. And the fifth location is a sort of alternative that we've come up with is the Ball Field on Shore Road. The idea of these banners, which you have images of, are to support removal of the track and building of the trail, and the decision to do that ASAP so that we can preserve this federal funding.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments, questions from the select board? None?
Just thinking.
Yeah, thinking? Okay, give you a minute here, and then we'll just move on, just want to make sure. I think MJ looks like she's thinking as well.
I don't have a problem accepting the gift, you know, the banners, it's just that we can't guarantee going forward. Once they go up, they're going to be maintained because, you know, things get vandalized and everything else. And I just want them to know that, you know. I mean, I support the organization and what they stand for, and I was your original one that brought this forward many years ago. And it's just, I don't know, it's a, a lot of people doing a lot of work over the years on this to get this for.
Okay, who else?
I'm in favor of the putting down the bike path. I guess my only concern is the language, pull the track, has raised a conversation that really doesn't address the issue, moving the track is more what we need. We still need safe evacuation routes and freight transportation and alternative routes for all these people coming over the bridges for now and with any construction in the future. And when you say pull the tracks, I think it just triggers people that are simply train lovers that think we don't like trains, and that's really not what's happening here. We're just looking after Bourne's best interest, and I guess that's my only concern, is the language, pull the tracks. I don't want that to elicit a bunch of conversation that isn't going to be productive about the project.
I appreciate that, may I respond to that?
Please.
Of course, sir.
You know, the Friends position is that a track is not needed. However, we've been really clear, and on all our publications, we've made it clear that if at some point in the future, in the military or the government, we believe the track is needed, obviously, this track wouldn't be moved, but a new track could be built, and in fact, would likely be a great improvement to build alongside McCarthy Boulevard in connection with the bridge project. It would be less expensive, and it would, of course, put the track in, take the track out of environmentally sensitive areas. Our pull the tracks slogan is simply because that's actually what needs to happen for the Bourne Rail Trail. You know, I've spoken to a lot of people about this issue of the track. One of the reasons the Friends don't believe it's necessary is because, in fact, the military's need for the track is based upon a strategic plan by the National Guard. And the strategic, and that could obviously be a mandate to remove that because none of the orange cape tracks are strictly necessary for the strategic plan. It's sufficient for the strategic plan that there are tracks off cape. So that hasn't been seen by us so far as a complete impediment. Because for the upper Cape towns needs, if in the future it was deemed necessary to truck trash, for example, you know, then a new track might make sense. But right now, you know, we don't, none of the upper Cape towns use that track for municipal trash disposal. It's literally only used by one private operator for construction debris. So again, if that becomes a need in the future, one of the things that happened that we just saw with the fire at the transfer station is that all those trucks that are supposedly going to inundate the roads went on the roads and no one noticed the difference. The transfer station, I think, is up and running again, but for some period of time after the fire, it was down. And it was a really interesting answer to the opponent's position that it will dramatically increase the traffic on Cape Roads. It's really actually, even using their numbers, a very insignificant percentage of the traffic on our road. So there, so I appreciate that, but we, you know, these banners are tight, you know, you have to really limit what you say in the banners, and we came up with pull the track because that's really what we need in order to secure the funding.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion on this, I would assume, or?
Go ahead, MJ.
So I'm actually very conflicted about this. I am in favor of pulling the track. I am in favor of going from rail to trail, I think it is the way to go. I know that the military has raised concerns and has asked the Commonwealth to commit to providing the rail that they feel they need. If this rail, if they don't have an objection of pulling this rail, they just want to make sure that whatever their strategic needs, the Commonwealth tells them, that they will provide those, those needs, and they have funding to help fund it. They just want to have the commitment of the state. I, I'm conflicted because I do not feel that it is appropriate for banners of the Friends of the Born Rail Trail to be put on town property to advertise their position. And even though I agree with the position, I'm not sure I feel it's appropriate for the banners of their position, advertising their position, to be placed on town property. I mean, there's non-town property places where they could be put, and so that's my conflict.
Okay, Marlene, do you have anything to, no, Peter?
I was to put a motion forward, and we'll just vote it up or down.
Let's do it.
Motion that we accept a donation of the banners on behalf of the Bourne Rail Trail and to allow them to be put on the town property of the town administrator's discretion, at the town administrator's discretion.
Okay, we have a motion from Peter, do we have a second?
Say, say yes, and then, not say yes, but second, and then just vote it down if you don't feel it's necessary.
You have a second?
Second.
All right.
Anne Marie does have her hand up.
Oh, Anne Marie, your hand is up, okay, so we have a motion and a second, further discussion, Anne Marie, there you go.
Yeah, I, I think I'm in line with Mary Jean as well. I love, I desperately want a rail to trail. But this takes a certain position, these banners, and what we've in the past, the banners that we've had accepted are for events, basically, and they've only been put up, allowed to be put up across Main Street. And we've accepted other things in the town with respect to like, you know, memorial benches, or plaques, or clocks, or things of that nature. Yeah, I, you know, as much as I want this all to happen, to take this certain stance on town property, I think is, is a little, is difficult for me to, to grab a hold of. And not only that, you know, places like the library, they have a governing body, the Board of Trustees, the community buildings is governed by veterans, you know, other elected governing bodies. I don't know that we have the authority to place them there. It would have to be obviously a vote to accept them, to the assumption that they would be placed there. I think it's not something that the select board has the authority to do. But, you know, I share a little bit of the same sentiment. I think there are non-town, there are areas in town where these could be just as effective that aren't, you know, on town property. I love the gift, but I'm not sure that, like Mary Jean said, that they should be on town property.
So can I ask, have we in the past had any similar types of signs like this? For any other efforts, like maybe, just, I'm just throwing out there, Holtech, or any other sort of event or thing that's been going on that's, that's not an event?
So I, I certainly don't, I can't give you the entire history.
Sure, of course, I know, I know.
But this is, so you do regularly see gifts, or requests to accept gifts. They are typically, they typically do not take a position on a current issue that is, you know, timely in the community. So that, in that respect, this is different. Now, what? If, if you accepted it as a gift, if the select board accepted it as a gift, you would be speaking as the government to send this message. So it would be essentially, it would not be the public's speech where we would be worried about opening up the forum to anyone who wanted to post a banner. This is, this, if you accept this gift, you are taking it as governmental property, and you would be putting it up as the government. So it's really does the select board, as the local government, want to take a stand using kind of your official governmental speech to say, this is what we, this is what we are doing, this is what we are advocating for?
At the same time, we have, don't we have a time-appointed board to deal with this particular project already? Or are we already involved to some degree already in the success of the rail trail?
So what I, I mean, the committee is appointed by the town administrator, so it is not a select board-appointed committee. This gift would be, it would be the select board speaking as the government. So the committee, I mean, there is a committee, it's not a, it's not a select board-appointed committee, though.
Ken has his hand up?
Okay, go ahead, Ken, sorry.
Thanks, yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that the reason we're offering this gift is not because we're asking the town to take a new position, the town's position has been since 2023, that the track should be replaced with the Bourne Rail Trail. So again, if, I appreciate the concerns about sort of the precedent, but in fact, this is the town Bourne's official position. So you're really simply, we're simply offering you some, a device by which to support the push this month to convince the governor to pull up the track, which is what the town has been advocating for for several years.
All right, so I guess let's go to vote.
Oh, you can sure, of course, make a comment, of course, on any agenda items, please, Todd. State your name and your.
Todd Benedict, Monument Beach, I'm speaking not as a library trustee, as a taxpayer now. I kind of agree with MJ and Anne Marie that putting a banner supporting the rail trail on town property, which is going to be a somewhat controversial vote, and already is controversial in the press. The town's making a statement, and people that oppose this rail trail may take offense to this town's position. So I support your position that the town not accept this.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think, well, I think, I think the town has expressed that we support a rail to trail, but the language of the sign is my conflict, you know, the pull. And I, you know, being someone that lost her job in freight and working in a warehouse because, because of the bridges, transportation, there is a need for alternative routes, and I just, I guess that's my struggle, is the language of the banner itself. And then that, if that becomes the proclamation, yes, concern about pushback.
Go ahead, MJ.
If the select board wishes to advocate for rail to trail and wishes to put notices on town property advocating for rail to trail, it should be the select board that does it? It should not be the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail that do it. And I think that's my issue, I, this is clearly a message of the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail. I don't know what the QR scan me code brings people to. I'm, I am, I would love the select board to be more active in advocating for rail to trail. And I would like us to think about what we could, what we could do. But I do not think it is appropriate for the select board to have advocacy for the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail for their, on, on town property. I just don't like the precedent, and I am not comfortable with it, I'm sorry. Because I, I absolutely want to advocate for this position. I just think that the way we do it is important, and we have to do what we have to do. I'm still not clear on what our advocacy should be over the next couple of weeks in response to some of the things that are happening. But that's not the agenda item tonight, so the agenda item is to discuss this donation.
Through the chair, I mean, very quick.
Go ahead.
Didn't, didn't the Shining Sea Trail take 20 years to get, you know, from beginning, infancy to ages, still getting it open? So if that's the case, this is, I won't be surprised if this takes a long time to do it for a similar reason, you know. So this isn't a sprint, this is a marathon, so we just got to, I guess, plug along in our things. We take one step back, we take one step back?
Okay, seeing no further comments. We have a motion from Peter and a second from Jean to accept the gift. So now we have to vote, Anne Marie?
No.
Jean?
Regrettably, no.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
So we have two, three, zero, motion fails.
Ken's hands up?
Go ahead, Ken.
That's right, I was just going, I was just going to suggest that the banners could easily be modified to remove the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail and to remove the link. The link is really just to a sort of fact sheet on the website. But again, if you're going to consider ways to support this effort in the future, please don't hesitate to ask us to produce new banners that don't have the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail on, and we'd be happy to do that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we take number nine out of order because seven and eight may take a while and item number nine, they're in the order.
Yeah, I was, I saw Todd sitting there, I was thinking, nah, if everybody is okay with that, I'm not opposed to it. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna take number nine out of order and continue discussion on the charge for the library committee. Where do we start here?
So I, in your packet, I have provided a copy of the charge as amended at the previous meeting, um, which I think was the 15th of July.
Okay. Let me get it up, because I have to go down. I have to, sorry, I was at the last agenda item, I need to-
Sorry, it's on page 32, if you're looking at the packet.
Twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two. Okay, so we had the meeting, um, we discussed just briefly the library charge. I know that MJ had some suggested language she had wanted to add and was going to send that out, um, which I know did come through. And I do believe those changes were made in here, and now we're here to discuss the charge. I guess I will go around first and for the Select Board to make recommendations, thoughts, comments, or is everyone satisfied with the changes? And then we'll go to the public after.
I would like to hear from the library trustees.
You'd like to hear from the library trustee first? All right, let's do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Todd Benedict from the Bourne Library Board of Trustees. What I'd like to do tonight is read a statement from the trust, from myself, uh, for the trustees. Uh, "We, the trustees of the Jonathan Bourne Public Library are requesting that the Select Board delay any formalization, uh, finalization of the library building committee until after the trustees' meeting to be held on August 28th of this month. This will allow us time to review and discuss the committee's charge document dated 7:15", and I guess that's the amended one with the red, uh, thank you, uh, "to make our comments and suggestions to the Select Board at a, at a future meeting." It, you know, we're only asking for maybe a month or so, so we can have our meeting on the 28th, discuss this. Uh, we have gone out to the wonderful internet and gotten some charges from other libraries that have been through this process before, and there's some valuable information in these that I think could be added to our packet to make it even a, a stronger committee. So that's what we're requesting tonight.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Jean?
I think it's a reasonable request.
Do we have a time constraint?
No.
No?
No.
I think that's a reasonable request.
I do, too. Nobody has any, nobody's opposed to that request?
Well, she-
All right, so if we, do we have a motion?
Is there any comment on what we have so far?
Uh, I mean-
I mean, that would be helpful, I think.
Um-
To then, because then the trustees would know if this is the document that they should be thinking about on the 28th, right?
I agree with that.
I didn't have any specific co- um, comments regarding the changes. I don't know if anybody else did? Peter?
I don't.
Jean? Anne, Anne Marie?
Um, yeah, I, I, I have some concerns about some of these things. I don't think it's necessary to have Bourne cable TV. I mean, the meetings are hybrid, people can zoom in and, um, they are recorded and then they're posted, so, um, I think the language surrounding meetings should be videotaped. I don't think that should be mandatory, that Bourne TV, I mean, we're not, it's not an elected governing body, so.
It's true.
I think site tech, we, site tech had, you know, in our site tech meeting, Bourne TV does, you know, we have requested and when they can, they do record it. It's not live, but they do record it, um, our meetings, um, but the hybrid meetings for building committees usually, I mean, it's, it's Zoom, so people can log in and then it's posted, it's, it's recorded and it can be sent and they can watch it at a later time. I don't, I don't know that they have to be, has to be specific to Bourne TV doing recording or mandatory. And then I think, I, I think some of these things, like, you know, like the quality, the schedule and the budget, I, personally, I think that's a responsibility of an OPM. I mean, we, we're, most OPMs get paid a considerable amount of money to, to make sure that schedules and, and previewing budgets and the quality of things, um, that's part of their responsibility and it, I think the board should hold them accountable for that. Number five, I don't know, um, if the town administrator, I mean, they're, they're really the authority that we, you know, we-
Yeah.
That contract does, it, that, um, is responsible really for the, the contracts, um, expenditures very, versus budgeted appropriations. I mean, even, I, I know the ICEFAN does review invoices, um, but as far as like, uh, how things are budgeted and appropriation expenditures really is, is, I don't think should be the responsibility of, of a, of a building committee. I think number nine ha- happens organically. ICEFAN's in the middle of doing that now, just like fixtures and furnishings and things with that, that happens naturally with the architects, you know, what they're presenting and, and the types of building materials and things like that. We have a representative, number 10, we do have a representative of a library trustee, so I think they would bring those questions to table. I don't know that that has to be specifically stated. And then building commissioning and approve the closeout of the project, again, you know, we have an OPM and we have a, um, with the expertise, I'm, I'm hoping.
Eleven.
And we should, um, to kind of guide the committee with respects to that, so, um, yeah, and I, I think 12, too, works diligently to, diligently to resolve issues and disputes. I would hope that, that's something that doesn't need to be stated.
Yeah, right.
And that, you know, it's something that happens because, you know, it's such a diverse group of individuals, um, that they would, you know, collectively debate and, and get things resolved and make decisions. So those are just my only comments. And I think, you know, I think we need to be consistent with all our other charges with building committees right now, um, you know, just for that, for that purpose as well. We haven't had the conversation yet, and I think, you know, if it's something that the board wants to discuss to go move towards a standing building committee that we had, you know, previously MJ had brought to the table, which I, I think is something that is a big, you know, um, conversation to have and a very robust conversation to have with respects to, uh, building committees in the town and what's in the best interest of the town, if we move towards that direction. Those, those are just my comments, I'm-
Okay.
Thank you.
So far, I mean, those were my first reactions when I had a chance to review everything.
Go ahead, Jean.
Okay, I, I would agree with what Anne Marie said about the, the project manager and, um, reviewing and closing out the pro- uh, what was that number?
Commissioning and-
Commissioning and-
Program, yeah.
Correct, yeah. And then just to add to that as well, I think that, that needs to be weighed out, and the committee membership, um, the facilities manager serving ex officio, I, I could, having advice and the counsel, the facilities manager is valuable, but a person like that in the room just gives a lot of weight to the vote. I don't want that person to feel, it, it's kind of funny, it's like when I was in the traffic committee and we had members, uh, that makeup of the group. I just don't want the, um, building committee to feel like they can't have a robust discussion or feel like they're, um, you know, the vote is swayed or influenced. But I would hope that the trustees would have that discussion, too.
Go ahead, MJ.
So, um, I think we have clear experience in recent years, um, that although the OPM is supposed to be responsible, if the OPM doesn't do it, it is the building committee that has to ask the OPM for the schedule, that has to ask the OPM for the budget, has to ask the bud, the OPM for the comparison of the expenditures to the budget, it has to ask if the expenditures that they're approving are gonna fit within the budget or are they're gonna be coming from, um, another line item. So yes, the OPM is responsible for providing the information to that committee, but the committee needs to know when they're approving. The hundred percent commissioning, and Peter can co- talk more about that, it is not a given that there'll be hundred percent commissioning, and I feel that it is something that we should be giving, um, we should be putting it in the charge because we should be wanting it to happen. So we can, I don't want to spend too much time on it tonight because we have a lot of other things to talk about, and once we get the comments from the library trustees, we can have a more robust, uh, conversation on it. I think the standing building committee is, that discussion is pretty much moot at this point. The town meeting has authorized the Southside Fire Station Committee to expend those funds. We're setting up a, a library, uh, committee. I mean, it, it would be up for a future building, as yet not identified, if we were gonna start doing that. So if we're moving forward with a library committee, I don't see the reason for even thinking about a standing building committee at this time.
Okay.
And with the hundred percent building commissioning, if we don't put it here, I would want it in the RFQ as part of the, uh, the big documents, uh, just because we saw with Bourne Intermediate School that we had to ask for that with the mechanicals, because if not, then we would have had some prob- we would have had serious problems in, in getting the building open. The OPM was very diligent, um, in, on that project, and even the OP, and then, and the former superintendent, and myself and a few others pushed for the hundred percent commission to make sure it was done right. And as a result, we have a better school for it today, so, I mean, for the, I mean, I respectfully disagree with, um, my fellow member when it comes to taking that item out, but I think it needs to be emphasized more, not less, because this is a town asset.
Okay. All right, so do we need a motion to, no? No motion necessary, we will wait until after your meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, moving on. So we are moving on to a continued discussion, um, development of the annual goals after the July 25th Select Board retreat. C-section, Charter section three, three dash three. So preliminary goals from our retreat, um, our goal, preliminary goals were to ensure clarity in Select Board decision-making and goal-setting to provide consistent, actionable direction to the town administrator. We're supposed to clarify decision-making process, what decisions need to be made and establish a clear process. We're supposed to ensure clear communications of board goals to the town administrator. We, um, discussed wastewater planning, including water should permit and comprehensive wastewater, somewhat the management plan, capital planning and prioritization, final marijuana, finalizing our cannabis marijuana policy. And then we discussed quite extensively during our, our retreat communication policies, including our expectations, um, around social media and the town, um, website. So I don't know where we need to start here in this conversation, um, just, I mean, our, we're discussing, you know, continued discussing on the annual goals. So go ahead, Peter.
I think we need to, let's go back and look at the, the, the goals that we had for the year before, make su- and start with those first before we start looking at anything new and see if we need to, need, need as part of those goals from the previous year, need to move them forward to this year for completion. And, you know, and there's a difference between town adminis- goals for the town administrator and goals as a Select Board as a whole, and the communication policy on around social media is a selectman goal, so that needs to be separated out from the rest of it. But I think we should maybe look at the previ- the goals from the previous year first to see what hasn't been completed and see what need to move over to this year.
Okay. Anybody else? I'd agree with Peter.
Good morning, Ann Chair.
Sure, please, Anne Marie, I'd love to hear from you.
Um, so are we looking also to kind of narrow down some of the things on this list? Or so, for instance, like water, wastewater planning, including watershed permits, um, you know, I, I think there, I think that's a very broad goal, and I think there needs some narrowing down of specifics, you know, like with what, what, what do we want to do this year? We know that that's a multi-year plan, but what specifically do we want to do this year with respects to watershed permits? I think there needs to be some narrowing down if, if this is a goal that's going to be part of our annual goals and, you know, it is a multi-year goal, obviously. So, uh, you know, what specifically surrounding watershed permits do we need to accomplish this year? So I think there's like, for capital planning and prioritization, same thing, like what specifically this year do we need to accomplish with capital planning and how do we prioritize that? Because some of these are obviously multi-year goals, so are we at that point or, um, you know, as Peter said, looking, I'm not opposed to looking at last year and where we're at and whether we need, what multi-year goals we have from the previous year that we also need to put on this list.
Okay.
Some of them, like finalizing the marijuana policy, I think that's, um, I think that's, that goal is almost there, um. I was, you know, I, I apologize again, I was not at the workshop, but, um, I think, you know, uh, decision-making, that process, ensuring, you know, like board goals and once we set them, like to really focus in and tune in in a lot of our agenda setting and, um, you know, decision-making is focused on those goals and sometimes, you know, the rest of it, as, as much as we want to fix everything and solve all the problems, sometimes the answer might be, it can wait. So that's my big concern, too, with respects to, to the goals and decision-making process.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Jean?
Well, we really didn't spend much time on goals at the retro. I mean, it was like the last 15 minutes, um, and we didn't really have anything to work with i- in terms of formatting it, so, um, I did go back and look at the goals that we, for this meeting, I did go back and look at the goals that we had set for last year, which were sort of framed around, um, the strategic plan and our strategic plan initiative. So I, I do like framing them that way because it gives us sort of categories to work into and a, a way to prioritize. I agree with Anne Marie that we need to be specific enough in the goal for the year that, that we can say at the end of the year, did we accomplish our goal or did we not accomplish our goal?
Yeah.
And I think some of our goals have been a little bit, they're, they're recognized as multi-year, so we don't hone in enough in terms of like exactly what we want to accomplish. I do think that that would be, um, helpful, uh, um, so, but we, we need, I mean, we are supposed to try to have goals by September 1st, so we need to, like, how, how do we want to go about this? I mean, I, I, I don't, we need to set aside some time and figure out exactly how are we gonna go about doing this?
We're not gonna finish this tonight.
No, no, I know, it was just a quick, you know, it's why it's on here to discuss, you know, what do we do next? How do we get them developed? It may be another meeting, another sort of session we have, like we had to do with the cannabis where we all meet and kind of pen up our thoughts, what do we need to do? And I think our next discussion is gonna help with some of that, because we do have to have a discussion about the CWMP and all of those things, which that's, you know, obviously the NOI is a big deal, so, um-
Personally, I think we should, we should set up a workshop just for this, so we can give it the attention that it deserves and even- And even if it's, and if it's on a separate night, separate day, or whatever it is, I don't have a problem with a meeting on a separate day for this because there's only so many Tuesdays.
Yep, got it, all right.
I agree.
So, we don't need any votes on that. We just need to kind of talk with Marlene and try to come up with a date for a workshop to kind of finish. Thank you, that was pretty easy. All right, so, these are some continued discussions, and this really kind of speaks to, you know, a little bit about our annual goals, right? Because we have this on our table. So, the first is on there is CWMP, and it says watershed permit application. Our first one is whether or not to proceed with any further work on the CWMP. We know that our prior CWMP, it did not pass MEPA. We're clear on that. It was not successful. We worked on it for two years, and the fact of the matter is that it did not pass. So, now we have to decide what are we going to do with that document? What do we, what's our plans? Is it going to be used for reference? Are we going to, what are we doing? So, that's what that topic of discussion is for. And I will go around to the Select Board and see what we get to.
Okay. So, I think this is the fourth time that we've had this on the agenda since May 28th. And while there's been some, some sort of discussion, the focus of the agenda items has been whether or not to continue work on the CWMP. I'm not sure that's the question that the board should be discussing. The board needs to discuss the draft Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan refinement report that was presented to us in May. We need to go through the list of responses that were proposed and determine if we agree with the proposed responses and determine whether we want to reconsider any of the comments that are listed as the Select Board will consider further. I mean, are we going to discuss those responses and talk about our response to those comments? Helen said like once the Select Board votes on any changes to the responses that they drafted, responses to the comments or changes to the recommended plan, that Apex can then complete a red line of the recommended plan report document and present it as a final Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan report. And it may not be the final report the DEP wants us to be, but it would be a final report on like where we are in the recommended plan process right now. So, I've, I've spent a lot of time looking at the report, looking at the comments, looking at what comments had the response the Select Board will consider further. And I think we need to consider those comments further. I think we need to make some decisions. And I've, I've considered the comments and I have some thoughts. And I, I think I want to sort of say what my edits to the document are. I mean, I, I feel that we, we have to make some decisions. And the decisions that we make on the recommended plan are just giving us a guideline and a, for, for where we're going forward. And there are some decisions as Marlene's told us that we're going to need to make. And if we're going to make the decisions, we should make them and put them in the, the plan so we know what our recommended plan is. I really want to leave our project of two years or three years or however many years it's been with, with a direction and a guidepost. This is the direction that we're going in. So, I, I am going to propose the amendments to the draft that I think that we should make. One, I think we should edit that.
Well, before we, before we go into all of that, why don't we let everybody go around and say what they feel? Because we're going to make edits to it. We may not even decide to continue with it.
I'm going to talk about the edits that I think we should make. And if then people don't want to make those edits, then, then that's fine. But we've been asked, Helen asked us to make, to say, what do you, do you agree with the responses to the comments?
Helen is done, Helen is paid, there's no more money for Helen. So, let's hear what you want to say, and then we can get going here on the rest of this conversation. Please, and thank you.
All right. Helen has indicated that she is not done, and she recognizes that there is no more money, but that she has a commitment to finalize the report. So, the first thing that I would recommend is the plan incorporate into the, the report the filing of watershed permits for Finney's Harbor and McGansett's Quatique watersheds in accordance with the votes of the Select Board. I think that the, that we should change the responses to comments requesting the filing of watershed permits from the response the Select Board will consider further to the Select Board has reconsidered and has filed watershed permit notice of intent for Finney's Harbor and McGansett's Quatique watersheds and recommends the filing of watershed permits for any watershed that becomes a nitrogen-sensitive area in the future based on an assigned TMDL. That would be a change in a comment response from what was proposed. Change the responses to comments, multiple comments, requesting sewer-ing from Select Board will consider further to Select Board has reconsidered and has made sewer-ing the recommended first-choice option. And I think there are other reports, edits to the report that would need to be done based on those three responses, and I'm not going to go into those in detail. But if the Select Board feels that that is a response that they would be willing to put into the report, then I can talk about what changes I think would have to happen to make the edit, the report match the responses.
Okay, anyone else?
So, M.J., if I may, Ann Marie.
Yes, please.
M.J., I'm a little confused. You're using the words "report" and this, and the CWMP. I'm a little confused. What, what are you referencing as "report"?
The, the name of the report is the Draft Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Refinement dated May 2025.
So, it's not a report, it's the Draft Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan?
Right. And we're talking about finalizing the Draft Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Refinement. By changing the responses in the grid to certain items from Select Board will consider further to actually say what the Select Board's response to those comments is.
I mean, some of these things, yes, we, I can understand the edits, but applying for filing future watershed permits in the event that any other watersheds become NSA's is not a discussion that the Select Board has had or has voted on. We've had no discussion whatsoever on that. But so you're saying that that should be in part of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan? Or that comment should be part of the wastewater management plan? I, I'm getting very confused here. And maybe it's just me, I'm been under the weather. But we've had zero discussion in any part of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan or when we decided to file an NOI on, on future watershed permits for, in the event NSA's are going to be. In any, in the event any of the other watersheds get an NSA rating.
Okay. So, we could, so we could change the, we could leave that out. I mean, I think it's something that we should put in, that we will consider doing that for any watershed permit, for any watershed that is named a nitrogen-sensitive area in the future, we'll consider filing a watershed permit. You could cushion it a little bit. But our, I believe our response should not be the, that, I think having a report that says that we're, we're going to consider it further when we've always considered it and filed watershed permits, that should be in our comments as response to comments that were received during the comment period. And part of finalizing the report is for the Select Board to vote on their comm, on their responses to comments that are presented during the public comment period.
Okay, this is where I'm getting confused again. You're using the word "report."
Yeah.
But you're, you're talking about the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan draft, right? Refinement?
Yes.
Okay.
And that grid of comment responses is part of that report, it's an appendix.
Anything else?
I just think it's, I, I get, I, I'm, I'm, I understand like we want to wrap things up, right? Which is, which is weird, trying to go, right, Mary Jane? With respects to this Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan? I, I just struggle with the fact that it, and, and, you know, the time and resources that we have to attribute even to getting this at a point where we're, where, when, what is it? What is it at the end of the day? And what are we going to use it for? And it's not something that the state's going to accept. And then if we continue down the road of this plan and, and keep adding chunks to it and adding chunks to it, you know, what, what is the end, what is the end goal? What is the end result? Is it just simply to just have Helen hand us a document with these recommended changes? And then what? Because MEPA requires us to do so much more and require it with this plan. And that's where I struggle with even, you know, continuing down this road of,
Could I?
For, for a plan that, that is, that right now is just not feasible for us. And now we filed these NOIs for two permits, which is an entirely different process and requires an entirely different attack or, you know, strategic, you know, strategic plan or schedule, if you will, to accomplish it. And it's going to, you know, I mean, I, I guess it all goes back to like what, what goals are we going to set, right? Are we going to set a goal relative to the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan? Because that's going to take a lot of, a lot of energy and a lot of resources from the town. Or, you know, we're on this time constraint now that we filed this NOI and we have two watershed permits to tackle in, in the next, you know, five years, we say 2030, which is going to take an exorbitant amount of time and resources, you know, with respects to not just people, but money as well. So, I think that's where my struggle is, Mary Jane. So, I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to, to, to understand what the end result is that you would like us to, to have? Like still continuing with spending time on the CWMP?
Thank you, Ann Marie. Jean, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay, if I could, and then I'll let M.J. respond to Ann Marie. So, I mean, I, I thought a lot about this myself, and I agree. I'd love to see, you know, finalize the CWMP. But, you know, again, it did not pass MEPA. It was not successful, that's a fact. It was two years in the making and it did not go. And at this point, we have, as Ann Marie said, we have two watershed permits, an NOI that we just submitted, and we, we're limited on time, resources. It's going to take significant resources for us to do these watershed permits. We're going to have to hire scientists, legal experts, engineers. And it just, I just don't, I, I don't see how, you know, doing this, this work on this, I don't see where we can, I, I just don't, I, I just would rather put it aside until we can work on what's important, which is these watershed permits, and then maybe take a second look at it when we need to, to figure out how are we going to finalize it? What are we going to use it for? Because it didn't pass, that's a fact. So, I, I understand your points in some ways, but at the same time, we can't be wasting time on something that failed so that we can continue to fail, and we may not have time enough to, to do what we need to do for our watershed permits. I mean, the studies alone are going to cost millions. So, that's my point. My point is, do we even have the time and the resources to even continue with this CWMP that currently did not pass MEPA? So, that's my two cents. And I'll let you respond to Ann Marie now, because I know you wanted to speak on that.
I, I think you're making the edits to this draft Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan a much bigger deal than it is. I will say, as far as I'm concerned, we should be using sewer-ing as our primary option. When it comes to McGansett's Quatique, we should not be having IA systems in 286 parcels. We should be having sewer-ing in 150 parcels. And that should be what our recommended plan is for McGansett's Quatique, which only flips the backup plan to the first priority plan. That's not a major lift, it's just changing one, from one grid to another. It's not putting a lot of effort in, it's just saying, we're, this is what we're going to do. When we go to McGansett's Quatique to start our watershed permit, we're going to be thinking about sewer-ing. We're not going to be thinking about IA systems. That gives the direction for what we're going to do for the watershed permit. It is clear the DEP is, if for a full-blown Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan wants us to do a lot of environmental impact statements, but part of that, I, I think might change if we actually said that we were going to use sewer-ing to meet our TMDLs. So, if we say our response to the comments that we should be considering sewer-ing as our first-choice option is that we're going to consider sewer-ing as our first-choice option, that gives us direction. It requires changing a couple tables in this report to make sewer-ing the first-choice option. It's not a major lift, it is something our consultant said that she's committed to doing. I think we should be doing watershed permits. If there's a TMDL, we should make a commitment to doing watershed permits because that's the way we have control of create, of fixing the water quality issue in the, in, in the watershed. So, I, I, I am not in favor of the plan as it is written. I would not accept this as a report, as a final draft of a report. If other people want to accept the report as written as a final draft of the report because they think that it, it says what the Select Board should be doing and what the Select Board is going to use as a guide for doing watershed permits, then that's totally up to the Select Board. My feeling is that sewer-ing should be our first-choice option. And a lot of the comments, the DEP and Budget Bay Coalition and the Cape Cod Commission and APCC had about our report and APCC had about our report, where that we weren't using sewer-ing as the primary option to meeting the TMDL and fixing the water. I think if we say, "We've heard you," our response is, "That's what we're going to do," that we'll be on the way to doing watershed permits and making our job a lot easier in the future. And it's just making some edits now so that we have a document that says what we think we're going to do.
Any further discussion?
I don't think these are that big of a lift. And while we still have Helen's attention, congratsually, she may be paid fully, but she's willing to commit to finish this document. And so if we can get her, you know, for the board to authorize these, these edits, then that's one less thing, because if we have to put it on the shelf and then come back later. Helen may be gone, which means you're going to bring someone else up to speed. And so, and that, and that's a problem I have as well. So I think what MJ's asking for is not that big of a lift. But I could be wrong too, but I'm just stating an opinion on my part.
Okay, so what, what's the board's pleasure here? Do we need to vote on this? Get a motion?
John York's hands up.
John, John, please, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. Just as a consumer of whatever the Select Board does, I would strongly recommend that you finish the report and publish it as a draft with, and it reflects what you're actually thinking you might do. I feel a lot of questions from other residents of the town about wastewater and the town's plans. I go to bat for you guys a lot. I get a lot of complaints that they're dropping the ball, they're not doing their job, this, that, the other thing. I would love to have a document I could point to and say, "This is it." I get confused. I don't know what the answer is. Is the town on to sewer-ing now? Or is it still on IA systems? And I want to defend you guys. I want this thing to go forward however you're taking it forward, but it's impossible to defend you if I don't have a document I can point out that says this is where they stand, in writing. It's important that it's in writing. So I would strongly recommend that after all the work you've put into this draft, it comes out as something that I can point somebody to. Go look at the town website. There's the draft. You can read it for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Marlene, do you have any thoughts or comments on any of that?
I do think, I do think you need to make a, a clear decision on what it, exactly it is that you want to do.
There you go. I don't have issue with the edits, per se. What do we do with it after that, though?
Yeah.
Is, put it on the shelf and revisit it later? I'd rather do that when we have further work on it and it's before Helen disappears, so I...
So this is my suggestion. I have, I have like 14 edits, which sounds like a lot, but a lot of them are just like changing this table to say this instead of that, changing this table to say this. So my suggestion is that I take the things that I wrote up for what I thought the responses and the edits, and I send it to the board like I did something else. And you can see it. You can look at the report. And then we can have a discussion at a future meeting about whether to accept these, whether they're, accept these edits and whether they are the direction the board wants to go into.
Can we, wish there was a way we can make a decision tonight and be done.
I can read all the edits if you want, but I think that's a lot to ask.
Well, yeah, it's already five, two minutes and nine, so I probably, we'd be here till midnight doing, going through all that. So we probably should, I don't know, I mean, and Marlene, you're, you're looking for some direction tonight, correct?
It's, I think the board needs to make a decision. If you can't make a decision tonight, we need to bring it back and, and talk about it at another time. I think it's more important that everyone clearly understands what your policy is that you're saying.
Yeah.
When's the next, what's the next meeting? It's 26. I think she, I think MJ can do the, you know, do the draft edits and have it back for the 26th and we can vote on then.
All right, so why don't we do this? We can, you know, I'm not opposed to seeing the edits. Doesn't mean I'll agree with the edits or my change, my mind will be changed at all. But I guess we could have her do the edits and then post it on next agenda if we have room.
Well, I can list the edits. I can't really do, I don't have a...
Something you feel we're going to have room on our next agenda? That's the thing.
Probably not on the 26th.
Okay.
But we can, we can work on the schedule for that.
On a different one, okay.
Or this should not be emailed to the full board. This should be emailed to the town administrator's office.
Yes, yes, okay. Okay. Is that fair? Sound fair to everyone? No decision? We don't need to vote motion for that, do we? We just need to table it until the next meeting, correct? Wait for your edits?
Well, you want to give direction to MJ to forward any edits to town administrator?
There you go.
I'm, I'm watching your expression. I want to see...
Well, I, I, I'm fine with doing that, but I don't want it to wait until August 20th and for the board to get the edits as part of a package. I would like them to go to the board for the board to be able to consider them. I also feel that if we're going to have a meeting about goals separate from the 26th, that we might, we might have the discussion about the edits at that workshop meeting and do, because this, this topic is pretty integral to the goals of the, that we'll be setting.
What it goes, we'd be done by September 1st, so we're going to have to meet in August sometime anyways.
Yeah, that's right, September 1st.
Yep.
So, yeah, that'd be a perfect time to do it. It's part of that workshop.
Marlene, you think that's a good idea?
This'll be up to...
We have to fit it in the calendar.
This'll be up to you as chair to determine.
Yeah, the 26th, let me see here, August 26th is our next Select Board meeting. Well, we haven't set a, I mean, we, we have to find a date for the workshop first, so...
Or something, correct, before the first, yeah.
Why don't we, I mean, I don't know. We can't really motion now. I mean, you can maybe make a motion that will, MJ makes the edits and that we can get them at the, you know, at the next workshop. I don't know. What do you want? How do you want to do that? Peter?
I'm just thinking, I'm looking at a calendar, but we can deal with that later. MJ, you make the motion of what you want.
I'm, um...
Yeah, we're going to be pushing it for August 26th. I mean, I'm not going to guarantee we can do that. I have to look and see what we got on the agenda first. So we're going to have to figure it out for the end of the month.
So I'm going to, I'm going to read the rest of my edits so they're in the record. It will only take a few minutes. So Edit 4, and this is based on those prior edits of changing the comments regarding watershed permits and regarding sewer-ing. 4 is edit the report as necessary to reflect the primary recommended plan as sewer-ing is the first choice option and the backup plan is use of ban rat. 5 is to edit the report to include that watershed permit should be filed, should be considered to be filed for any watershed that becomes a nitrogen-sensitive area in the future based on assigned TMDL. 6, amend the McGansett's critique plan to reflect the recommended plan to be connection to joint-based Cape Cod or decentralized wastewater treatment facility for 150 parcels. The text of the report should include discussions with joint-based Cape Cod and Falmouth's considerations. 7 is amend Table 3 recommended plan to reflect the townwide recommended plan as the sewer-ing option and the backup option is ban rat and incorporate the amended Table 3 and related changes required into the document. 8 is accept the changes to Table 4 plan without watershed permit as presented in the clarification memo dated June 24th, 2025 and incorporate the amended Table 4 and related changes required into the document. 9 is amend Table 5 recommended plan with watershed permit. To reflect the recommended plan is the sewer-ing option and incorporate the amended Table 5 and related changes required into the document. 10 is amend Table 6 backup recommended plan. To reflect the backup plan is the ban rat option and incorporate the amended Table 6 and related changes required into the document. 11 is amend Table 7 probable construction costs backup recommended plan. To reflect the backup plan is the ban rat option with the amended number of parcels and incorporate the amended Table 7 and related changes required into the document. 12 is amend Section 1, Paragraph 6 to indicate the additional groundwater discharge may be available under Queen Sewell Park, but the discharge is in the Buttermilk Bay watershed and mitigation would be applicable. 13 is amend Section 2.2 Alternatives Analysis to note that the May 6, 2025 annual town meeting authorized the filing of special legislation to allow fertilizer management bylaw. 14 is amend Section 2.2.1 McGansett's critique regional options to include continued consideration of connection to joint-based Cape Cod and discussions with Falmouth. So those are all the edits that I propose. And because I have read them in an open public meeting as deliberation and part of it, I can, I believe, now send it in writing to all the Select Board.
Okay, so is there a motion?
So the motion is that to send recommended edits to the town administrator and the Select Board for consideration at a future workshop meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa, MJ?
Yes.
Melissa? Yes, I guess. Five, zero, zero. Okay. Moving on. Okay, we're back to this. So we have a wastewater advisory committee. The charge that they have is from prior to our NOIs and all of that process being, being sent. So our goal tonight is to discuss whether or not we feel that the wastewater advisory committee can continue. I will say that we did have a meeting, oh gosh, I'm not exactly sure on my date when it was. And we had sort of talked about pausing the wastewater advisory committee until we were able to figure out the next steps with the NOI as a Select Board. But since then, they have met four times. So I'm really not sure what the pleasure of the Select Board is going to be for this. So I will go around to the Select Board first and get some thoughts or recommendations on the wastewater advisory committee and their, whether or not we, we feel that they should continue or whether the Select Board should be managing this watershed permit. It's not committee work, in my opinion, but I'm going to let everybody else speak on this. So, who'd like to go first?
I will say that the wastewater advisory committee is not meeting in August, so if you wanted to defer this decision, you could do it. But if you want to make a decision, it's up to you.
Do you, for the chair?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Do you see any benefit of wastewater advisory committee staying on and, and, because you're, you're the chair of that committee, so explain what the benefits are for them to stay, to stay as a committee.
I think the wastewater advisory committee has the time to delve into issues and be able to make recommendations to the Select Board or the sewer commissioners that might be helpful. They don't have any authority to take action on their own. They are an advisory committee. I will say that the last meeting that we had where Brian Bobgarten, Gartle came and spoke, he's so knowledgeable and has such great information that I think it's really helpful. And I think that having Conservation and Planning Board and the Board of Health and the Select Board in a meeting, being able to talk and collaborate is, is helpful. And I think anytime we can have citizens who are engaged in a topic have good discussion, that it's a benefit.
Is the chair to follow up?
Go ahead.
So it's the charge as written, does that meet what you want to do? Or do you recommend edits to the charge?
I, I don't specifically have any edits to the charge. It may, if we, there may be edits based on the watershed permit or how we're going forward. I don't know. I think the charge as it is right now is, is fine.
All right, Anne Marie?
Well, the charge was for the comprehensive wastewater management plan support, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so...
There were some other items in there. There are other items in the charge. But...
But the purpose of it was to support the comprehensive wastewater management plan?
Correct.
Am I wrong?
No.
Is that not what it was?
Correct.
Because I wasn't around during that time?
Correct. It is. It was.
Okay, so if that plan, depending on what we do, I mean, what work are they going to do? The reason why I wanted a pause was so that we can get a handle on what our next steps are and, you know, what, if anything, they could do in supporting the watershed permit process. I don't know that there is, you know, that's a permitting process. It's very different than from just developing a plan. And it requires engineering and legal counsel, et cetera, professionals in the field that are going to guide us through that permit process. So I, I, you know, that was one of the reasons I, I, we haven't, as, look what happened tonight. We haven't even made decisions about CWMP. We're going into probably a fifth meeting trying to figure out what we're going to do with this plan. So, you know, that was the reason to put a pause on it. But I don't, if, if, depending on what final decisions are with the CWMP, what are the purpose are they going to serve? I mean, they don't have any, we don't have the authority over really title five regulations. That's the Board of Health. They're advisory board to the Select Board, not the Board of Health. So I don't know. I, I...
Anne Marie, uh, Jean?
I guess the charge, the charges are related to the CWMP. There is more work to be done. It's a group of individuals that have worked really hard and are dedicated to helping us solve our wastewater issues. I can see the desire to continue meeting. There's always more to learn. But I think until we define a new charge...
Can I make a comment? So when we met... So when we met, had this discussion before, part of the discussion was that the wastewater advisory committee. Would make some recommendations to the select board on edits that they thought should be made. To the draft comprehensive management plan. They met, they made recommendations. Those recommendations were presented to the select board. They happened to have another follow up meeting for someone that had been invited to come and speak to them. If the select board would like to ask, would like to pause the work of the committee. Because they have now given their comments on the draft wastewater management plan report. I think that's fine if the select board wishes to do that. They may make a motion and they may make that vote. And then the committee will be paused.
I think for me, it's the same thing. I think I super appreciate, I appreciate all the work that was done on the CWMP. That, that the wastewater advisory committee did. But the charge was for the CWMP and I think that's where I'm struggling. We have a committee and we have a lot of on our plate. We have a lot to do. And as Anne Marie stated, this is a permitting, this is a permitting issue. It's not a plan. So I'm just concerned and I think that the select board really needs to be, you know, be a big part of this. And of course, we always appreciate the committee work. But, you know, I'm not sure as if this committee is right now for this, this project. Whether we pause it or whether we discontinue it altogether, I don't know how to, how we want to handle that tonight. But again, I appreciate all the work that they've done, the charge that they had, it's, you know. But CWMP is written all through it and this is not the CWMP. This is a, this is a NOI and two watershed permits that we have to face here, so. So my thought would be to pause it or just dissolve it, one or the other. So I don't know what motion we might have, if there's any further comments from the public. Okay, hearing none, I don't know. Do we have a motion, Anne Marie, maybe? You could try a motion.
I think we should make it.
Go ahead, Jean.
I was, I was going to say, I think we can make, make a motion to pause the wastewater advisory committee. To see if there's any further charge that we can develop for the purpose in the future.
All right, so we have a motion from Jean to pause the wastewater advisory committee. Until we are able to either determine another charge or dissolve it at a different time. Does that make, that sound good?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion from Jean, do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Anne Marie, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will go to a roll call vote, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
No.
MJ.
Abstained.
Melissa, yes. So, does that fail? We have an abstain, abstention and three yeses, no.
Yes.
Yes, sorry, my brain, I got slow for a second, it's late. I got up early. All right, the motion passes, three, uh, one and one abstained. Okay. Moving on. Okay, so we're getting there slowly but surely. And seven, C is how to organize work tasks to pursue watershed permits for the D, T, D, TMDL watersheds. I'm going to hand this to Marlene to give us her thoughts here. Because I know the town administrator's office has a great deal of work to do here.
So what I would say is that if you are choosing sewer ring as your first option in both watersheds. That is a change from prior direction. So you need to, if that's what you're, if that is the policy direction that you're going to set. You should have that conversation and take all of those votes before we talk about this. Because your approach should be different depending on your strategy.
Understood, okay. So we should table this item until we've had further discussion on the CWMP?
On whether or not you are going to set the policy that sewer ring is your, is what you're doing for both watersheds. Because that's not the plan that was written thus far.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Marlene.
Motion, we defer action on this item for this evening.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter, second from Jean. Defer, what number is that? I'm sorry, eight C.
Yeah.
All right, um, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ.
Yes.
Melissa, yes, five, zero, zero. All right, thank you very much. We got through the library committee, thank you for staying so late, Todd over there. Introduction of the town administrators proposed reorganization of the facility.
Thank you, so briefly, I have not posted a public hearing yet per the charter. Because I would like to get some initial thoughts before I go through the whole process. So I came before the board in September of twenty twenty two. To reorganize the facilities manager under the assistant town administrator. We have worked diligently over the past three years. However, at this point, I, I do not think that this is a model I should continue to pursue. And I would, my intention is to come before the select board. With a reorganization request to follow the language of the charter. And put a higher level, a higher graded position in the DPW. Reporting to the DPW director. But essentially with the job title of facilities director. So it would not be a direct report to the town administrator. It would be in the DPW per the charter. Direct, reporting to the DPW director. But would be upgraded to a higher level of a position. And a higher job duties and responsibilities. Along with that, I would be adding an administrative position. I would not move forward with changes without the administrative position as well. It's just not feasible to expect that amount of administrative load to be. Done without a dedicated person. In conversation with the DPW director. If the board is interested in moving forward with this reorganization. At, at the time it became effective, it would also be the right time, in our opinion. To fully move all of the sewer tasks into the DPW. So right now, there's an administrative assistant in the town administrator's office. That is funded with sewer enterprise budget. That position would be one hundred percent general fund as part of this reorganization. And the sewer duties would go with the facilities duties to a new administrative position in the DPW. So I, I'm, I am prepared to file the, the public hearing notice for a public hearing in August. On the twenty sixth. But before doing that and coming to you with a full blown public hearing. I wanted to have a chance to introduce this to you kind of informally first. Because if it's something that you don't want to consider, then I will continue on with the course.
I think, for the chair.
Go ahead, of course.
And we tried it, you know, we, we tried it, you know, the present way for three years now. And obviously, if, if we're coming, if you bring this to us, it hasn't worked. But, and I think this proposal as submitted is a great next step. I mean, I like what's being proposed. I think that, I guess hope is part of this, that we have future plan and, and a budgetary plan. And so we can give this department or this, you know, the facilities director, the tools to do his job, you know. And that means staffing and other things. And I know it says head custodian, electrician, skilled laborers custodian, no proposed changes. But I think as we get these new buildings online and want to maintain the existing buildings we have. I want to give this person the proper staffing to do these jobs. Because they're not being done now. And, and maybe that means giving the director a chance when he, she, if, if his position is created. Give them a chance to bring his or her recommendations to the, to the board slash town administrator. Of what they want to see going forward. But I think that what the town administrator has provided to us in that package is a great first step.
Moving on. All right, thank you, Marlene, look forward to hearing more. Oh, sure, you got to come up to the mic.
Sure. Todd Benedict Monument Beach. I want to applaud you, Marlene. I've been a resident of the town for over twenty years. And, and facilities maintenance has been a bugaboo of mine for a long time. And facilities maintenance, Peter, you know, you and I've had conversations. It's asset management, these buildings are your assets. And right now, the assets aren't being maintained properly. And this is a great step moving forward and I, I want to thank you for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right.
So I agree that this is a great direction to go in. And I think one of the things that's happened is we had a facilities director. One of the things I'm interested in hearing about in the public hearing is. Sort of what the qualifications of the facilities director would be. We had a very highly qualified, our first facilities director was very highly qualified. He brought just a great, was a great asset and made a huge difference. And when he left, because he had so much work to do and very little support in his department. He made recommendations and what's happened in the years since we had that position. It was, it was downgraded and then it was downgraded again, and then it was downgraded again. So where we started with a very robust position, it got downgraded and we need a robust position. We need a highly qualified facilities director. Well, actually, one of the things I was interested in in terms of the building committee is giving input on systems. You know, these are the, so the, the new systems are compatible with the systems that we have. And whether he, that person has to be a member of the committee or somehow gives input in another way. I think it's really important for the facilities director to be, to be able to give input. On the construction of, and systems in the new buildings. So I'm interested in the qualifications, I'm interested in the budget implications. I totally support the adding of an administrative position. That would. Help, I think, relieve some of the pressure in the town administrator's office. But also like create a centralized, you know, sewer facility support. So I really like this direction and I think it's a good move for us to make, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to apologize for a second. I mean, when I said, you know, the director, facilities director, you know, wants to have retained. If this position is created, would give the recommendations or of what they want to do to the town administrator. I was incorrect when I said that, since this person will be reporting to the DPW superintendent. So I just wanted to correct that. And just a question on the administrative assistant. If you do take all those tasks and move it over to DPW, are you saying you're going to have one less person in the office like we have now? Or would, would that, the person that does it in town hall now be given different responsibilities? And this would be a new position?
This is a new position.
Okay.
This would be an additional position.
Okay, that's, that's the point I'm trying to get across, thank you.
Okay. Hearing no more, conversation on that. We're going to move on to events. So we have Mackenzie Breen, first birthday party, September sixth, twenty twenty six. Use of Buzzers Bay Park in a one day entertainment license for backyard jams. And then the South Bridge Connections extended previously approved event series to September twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Are we just approving these events, motioning, or do we have anyone here to speak on any of these?
I think KNG may have something to do with it.
Um, I'm Mackenzie, I'm the one for the first birthday party.
Hi, Mackenzie, go ahead.
Hi.
Sorry to keep you so late, if I knew you were there, I might have taken you earlier, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, I didn't want to interrupt. Yeah, my, I have twin daughters and we have a big family and we live in Buzzers Bay, right on the East Marham line. And we are always at Buzzers Bay Park. And we thought it would be a great location to have our daughters, our twin daughters' first birthday party.
Right, well, thank you very much, it sounds like fun. So do we have a motion from?
Motion to approve the application from Mackenzie Breen for the use of Buzzers Bay Park for a birthday party on September sixth, twenty twenty five. And a rain date of September seventh, twenty twenty five. And a one day entertainment license for backyard jams.
Second.
And subject to conditions by the town departments.
Second. Okay, so a motion from Peter, second from MJ.
And just the expectation that since this is a public place, we can't guarantee that this, you know, the. We bought off just for them, that there'll be other things going on at the same time.
You're aware of that, right, Mackenzie, that it's not, it's open to the public?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm totally aware. I, do you think I'm going to need those, like examples of the pavilion, but that's about it.
All right, all right, wonderful. So we have a, a motion from Peter, a second from MJ, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ.
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Unanimous, five, zero, zero, have a wonderful birthday.
Thank you, appreciate that, have a good night.
Okay, and then our next one is the Soul Bridge Connections extended previously approved event. Series to September twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Is Ken here for that, no?
No.
Okay, so I mean, this was up previously approved, so they're probably not here. Do we have a motion to approve this, this event?
Make a motion to approve the event series extension request from the Soul Bridge Connections for the use of Monks Park. For free guided meditation and Reiki section sessions on Sundays until the end of September.
Okay, we have a motion from MJ, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Jean. No further discussion? All right, hearing none, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ.
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Okay, consent agenda. Reappointment of Richard Coletti as constable for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. BHS volleyball spike club, use of community building and station four Pecassett for a car wash, August twenty fourth, rain date eight thirty one. BHS soccer boosters, use of station four Pecassett for a car wash, August twenty third, rain date nine six twenty five. Upper Cape cheerleaders, use of community building for a car wash, August tenth, twenty twenty five. Bourne Police Department, use of Buzzers Bay Park for the annual national night out event, September eleventh, rain date nine twelve. Special Olympics fee waiver in amount of thirty five dollars for the use of community center field. To Honto Association, use of town vehicles for annual gala day in Tohonto neighborhood on August ninth. Rain date August tenth, twenty twenty five, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda as submitted.
All right, we have a motion from Peter, do we have a second?
Second.
From Jean, any further discussion? Hearing none, Anne Marie. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ. Melissa, yes, five, zero, zero, unanimous, okay. So town administrators report.
Thank you. The town's grant application for MBI's digital equity implementation program was submitted prior to the July thirty first deadline. For the outdoor wifi improvements proposed for the recreation area behind the community building. And MBI did confirm receipt. The recreation department has. The recreation department has a ribbon cutting scheduled for tomorrow, August 6th, at 2:00 PM for the new playground behind the community building. This event is open to the public and all are welcome. A community kickoff meeting is scheduled for August 19th at 5:30 PM for the new all-wheel park to be constructed as part of the community building's outdoor recreation space. The library's summer reading program has partnered with the Cape Cod YMCA in their Summer Eats initiative with a free bagged lunch for any child, no questions asked. We have reached substantial completion for the new roof at Fire Station 3 and are now working through a short punch list. The request for applications has been issued and is currently open for the marijuana HCA that was reserved for an eligible social equity entity. Complete information can be found on the town's web, webpage. ISWIM has diverted 13.8 tons of food waste so far in 2025. Mast dot has confirmed that they have applied for the next round of the bridge investment grant program for the Bourne Bridge. We have received a complete petition from the Pecasset Woods Homeowners Association requesting that the town take ownership of Spinnaker Lane and Daniel Webster Lane prior to the August 1st, 2025 deadline. We will provide regular updates throughout the fall and winter as we prepare this article for the May annual town meeting. We have made a concentrated outreach effort to encourage participation on the charter review committee and have received a few more applications. When we have at least five interested residents, their names will be brought forward to the, for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have minutes from 7:15:25. Do we have a motion to approve?
So, move.
All right, Peter, motion from Peter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Anne Marie.
Second from Anne Marie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes, unanimous. Okay, of course, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
We're plugging along with the ISWIM business, uh, with the ISWIM, um, uh, project, uh, building committee. Uh, it looks like we're taking a position. We're gonna try to meet every other, every other week until, uh, completion of the project, um, and, um, you know, so the committee's determined to just keep unplugging along every other week to get the business done.
Good.
And then, um, and then with John York saying, uh, Anne Marie and I will be at the upcoming Bridges Meeting, um, you know, um, strategic group, um, which is like May, and I'm sorry, September 9th. So, um, we'll get email from the state at some point in the next couple of weeks confirming that. But Anne Marie and I will probably just keep unplugging along as we have, and with the town administrator as we have since the beginning of the committee.
Thank you. Correspondents?
Correspondents, August 5th, 2025. A DEP letter, draft RI former ammunition supply point east and west MRA. B DEP letter, draft UFP, QAPPLUCNUXO, support comments. Uh, C DEP letter, final feasibility study Otis Gun Club. D DEP letter, 2025 source removal annual report. E DEP letter, draft central impact area environmental monitoring report. F Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association annual dues. G Barber email regarding Hen Cove, Rain Garden. H Barber email regarding Ireland Drive speed limit. I P Davis Talent Bank Forum Charter Review Committee. J W Town Talent Bank Forum Charter Review Committee. K Xfinity Channel lineup changes. L Upper Cape Tech Minutes Regular Meetings, uh, June 12th, 2025. Um, M Upper Cape Tech Minutes Executive Session, uh, June 12th, 2025. N McCabe email regarding replacement beach sticker. O Chapter 91 Application for 1 through 0 Bassett Island Regarding Appear Ramp and Float. P Buzzards Bay Action Committee Annual Letter and Due's. Q Letter from Algonquin Regarding Article 97 Land Gas Main Location, relocation, relocation. R J York email regarding upcoming meetings for, oh, look at that. Regarding upcoming meetings for Cape Cod Burgess Program. S J York email regarding comments submitted for Cape Bridges Program, Cape Cod Burgess Program. T Old Police Station 173 and 175 Main Street Updates. U Cannabis Control Commission Letter Regarding Notice of Outstanding Host Community Municipal Equity Submission. V Town Planner Letter Regarding 317 Barlow's Landing Road. And W J York email regarding Cape Cod Bridges Forum at Sandwich High School.
XYZ, we would have the full alphabet.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Like the alphabet tree.
So, future agenda items related to correspondence and other items for discussion?
Should we put, um, the meeting tomorrow regarding the bike path? Do we need to worry about a quorum?
It won't be there. It won't be there.
Okay, um, the other issue was the Saturday, or Saturday or Sunday, the Cassette, is it next week?
Well, it's water quality where Anne Marie is speaking. That's this Saturday.
Yeah, I'm a member as well.
I'm a member too.
Sometimes we, you know, we, we had a discussion. I know MJ had sent an email about that and I had been doing some research about that, about how the quorum works when we're not debating and when we're all in one place. Like, it's not, it, it, yeah, maybe Marlene can.
Well, just because Anne Marie, the topic being discussed is the wastewater.
We may wanna comment. I mean, other people would want to make comments.
Just to be safe.
And if we're not all making comments and it's just Anne Marie, but.
Yeah, but, but it, yeah.
Any side discussions are suspect.
But by posting, you're not limiting us. You're giving us a chance to speak and it's just that you're gonna have to take, if you're there, we're gonna have to just make sure minutes are accurate.
On, 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 on caution.
Yeah.
I know, it's, it's, it's tough. It's like, I know Mr. York had sent a message about, you know, one Cape, you know, how do we handle that? So, I think we'll be okay and I think if it should be posted, it should be posted, yeah.
I, I think we should post it and the minutes could just be attended the meeting and we're not gonna make any motions or.
I'll just keep track of the attendance and time.
Yeah, yeah. I think we should post that, the PVA.
All right, so next meeting dates, uh, August 19th, Board of Select Sewer Commissioners. Um, August 26th, Select Board. September 2nd, Select Board. September 30th, HCAC Interviews Social Equity Candidates. September 9th, Select Board. September 16th, no meeting. One Cape Conference, September 26th, no meeting. September 30th, Select Board. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
All right, Peter, motion, second.
Do we need to pick before we adjourn a date? Are we gonna work on the workshop before September or are we gonna have to? Just do that by email fast and furious?
We'll have to figure that out in the next week or so, maybe. Do we have a second to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Jean. Uh, okay, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. We're adjourned.